Okay, good evening, everybody. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Daily City Council this Monday, February 5th. Would you please all rise to say the pledge to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present. All right, we have two presentations this evening. Let us start first with, we have Nick Garcia from the Daily City Firefighters. Oh, I guess I should have checked first. If not, hey, Nick. Are you ready to go?
Sure.
All right, come on up. Here is Nick Garcia from the Daily City, the president of the Daily City Firefighters, Local 1879, on the scholarship program from Daily City Firefighters. Nick, good evening.
Yes, thank you for having us. They're kind of, they're kind of meandering in here, chatting, you know, chatting, firefighters. We'll give them a second. The family's out there, too.
Ah, the family.
I was saying, I'm not used to meetings, small meetings like this.
Well, welcome. It's good to see you.
So, let's see. Here they go, they're kind of coming in here. There we go. Okay, so, so really, this, this, tonight is something exciting and fun and cool for the community. And a lot of what we do as a union is not always here at the council chambers. A lot of what we do is out in the community. We participate in a lot of festivals, the Phil Am Festival, Pacific Islands Together, Rebuilding Together. There are lots of different events that we've been a part of over the years. And we thought that it would be nice to bring one of our newest concepts and share it with the council and with the city. So, I'm just going to give a quick overview, and then I'm going to really let the focus be on the family, who has the story to tell, and two of our members, Captain Jeff Hunsey and Engineer Jason Hamilton. But the, but the quick overview and kind of how this came to be was, a few months back, Jason Hamilton gave me a call and said, hey, you know, this family that stays in touch with us, let me know that their daughter is, is going to college. She's grown up and she's going to college. And I said, okay, well, tell me, tell me the story. And so, the story was, which they will elaborate on, was them responding to the family's home approximately 18 years ago and helping with the delivery of this, of this young lady. And it's, it's very infrequent for us that a family stays in contact with us. Most of what we do as first responders, for firefighters and police officers, when we have contact with the family, usually that's it. You go out for the response and, and you move on and you keep, you keep going through, through your career and time goes quickly. And we don't always have that ability to stay in touch with somebody. So, it really, for us, is a, is a unique and special thing when a family stays in touch with us, especially for something that's positive like this. So, it was, to me, it was just a really charming and interesting story. Again, Jason Hamilton and Jeff Hunsey both stayed connected with them and both wanted to do something for the family. And through some collaborative discussion, we said, you know, why don't we start a, a yearly scholarship for one of the kids in, in the community? It's something that will, you know, be a great benefit, of course, to, to one of the kids in the community, something that's close to all of us, and especially with people up on the council who are educators. It's, it just, it, it just came out of nowhere from that story and said, you know, what a, what a really cool and, and fun thing that we can do. So, what I would like to do is have Captain Jeff Hunsey and Engineer Jason Hamilton come up, along with the Spinetti family, and they can kind of tell the story and let everybody hear it.
Yes, please do, absolutely.
Ah. Ah, Hunsey.
All right, come on up here. So, I'll introduce the family. First off, we have Natalie. She's the, one of the spotlight tonight. And then her mom, Sonia, and her father, Ron. And so, it's, we go on many calls, like Nick stated, we usually aren't able to reconnect. So, we're seeing people usually at their worst time, or it could be, in this case, at their best time. And so, that night, it was very rewarding for us because we had the opportunity to help Sonia, who did all the work, by the way. So, it was very rewarding for us to actually go to a call and then stay connected throughout the 18 years. In fact, I believe it was March 9th, 2000. Now, I don't have that good a memory. I actually got the info from the mom here. But anyway, the call came in about 3:25 in the morning. And so, usually, when you get calls, certain things trigger you. And if it's a medical call and there's someone in, possibly in labor, it kind of heightens everybody up. And so, it was about 3:20 in the morning. And what I like to do is turn it over to Sonia, the mom, because she could definitely give us the details of what went on. And then kind of how we interacted that night from Engine 95. So, another positive was, we were short distance away, less than a half a mile. And so, we got there in quick notice. So, Sonia, if you'd like, you can kind of tell everyone what went on that night, and then we'll kind of elaborate off that. And, of course, Ron.
Well, you go first.
Everyone was sleeping. Sonia decided to wait a little longer than usual. I had just got off of knee surgery, like, maybe three weeks, ACL. So, the oldest daughter came in and said, hey, mom's ready. So, I'm thinking, pick up bags and we can leave. I had a little one already, I was about three, Joseph, and it wasn't that, she was having, she was in labor. So, I was very thankful that these guys showed up as quick as they did. Sonia did sort of push Natalie along, so Natalie came out pretty quick. And talking to the dispatch, I just tied off what I could tie off. And then we had to wait for these guys to help me. I was very, very thankful, because it was, it was a lot. It just got woken up and it's like, you didn't even have time to think. It was just that quick. But without these guys, I don't know, it would have been a little, a little more touchier. But I was real happy they showed up.
They came, they came pretty, pretty quick. It was a very prompt response.
And we really appreciate the first responders. I think if you guys could keep them very local and keep the money going, I would, I would be appreciative, I'll tell you.
Every minute counts in, in, when it comes to lives.
And like you said, we've had the experience of at least talking to them more than once. And like I said, I couldn't say enough. It's, we're really thankful that they were there.
Wow, what a story. Who, who were the responders?
It was myself and Jason Hamilton was our, and at that time, we had just gotten the paramedic program rolled out in 90, at the end of 98. So, we were a couple of years into the paramedic program, and fortunately for us, we got a seasoned medic, because he came from the ambulance company, so he had a lot of calls under his belt. So, I felt assured. But yeah, Jason was our paramedic, and I believe the driver that night was the time chief banister, who was driving for me that night. So, yeah, it was pretty incredible. Jason, you have anything to add? I mean, he did most of the work, he just kind of assisted. Of course, besides Sonia.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, any mother will tell you, Sonia did the real heroics that day, so, you know, we were just there in support. But I did want to say thank you, guys, for letting us be part of this moment of your lives. It's, it's really, it's been a defining moment for me, and I know it, it actually has become that for, for all of us. And, you know, you guys, we've talked, you guys are family now. You have 60 brothers and sisters who will do anything for you for the rest of your life. And it's, it's been a lot of fun getting to be friends with you guys. And just, you know, when, when we don't have a good day, I think of you guys. And I, I thank you for that, you know? You, you've given us far more. And, you know, I know it might sound kind of goofy, but it's the truth. And, you know, we love you.
And we go our ways, please.
Yeah, so, we're, again, we're just excited for this moment. It was great to be able to reach out. We've, throughout the years, we've run into each other periodically. We were in an ice cream social, I think it was about 10 years ago, she, actually, it was 11, she was seven. And so, we ran into the family, and then just recently ran into Sonia at, at one of our local restaurants. So, it's nice to get connected with the community. And like Nick said, a lot of times, we don't get to reach out because we're there to, to touch these moments up for people. But in this case, it's been awesome for everyone. It's great to be reconnected. And as a local, we'd love to, you know, cherish this moment, and more importantly, sponsor young Natalie here, who's going to Skyline College at the time and studying to become a physical therapist, which a lot of us in this room will need you at some point. So, with that, I'd like to invite her.
Oh, wow.
Come on up.
God, I'm going to take the biggest check with you, fine.
You come around, you come around, stand up on the top, too. Philly did.
Oh, yeah.
Tell the fire, tell the guys, come on, come on up, fire. Come on. Hey. Oh, you got to hold it up, hey. Oh, you want to come up over here.
This is a serious check.
Yeah, yeah, come on.
All right, we're going.
Come on, Jason, come on up, guys.
Let's get in the picture. Stand up. Come on, stand up.
Ray's like, I want to be closer over here.
Come on, closer.
Let me get in. Do you see us?
One, two, three. Perfect.
So, let me, well, let me, let me open the floor to some comments from the, the members of the council. Vice Mayor, would you like to start?
Okay. You okay? Okay? All right. First of all, my observations from what I see. Nick, what's that pink thing on front?
Uh, this?
Yeah, it's pink. Oh, it's pink. Hey, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see that our fire department is becoming a little bit more softer and...
Oh, my God.
But anyway, what I wanted to say is, coming and being a first responder myself, you, the thanks. We do the job and we don't expect any thanks. And that is, that is what we do. And that's why I feel a special sense of belonging when you have maintained a relationship with the family. To the family, I thank you so much for recognizing our first responders, especially these folks here. You know, you can drive down the street, people can look at you, they can call you names, but you know, as first responders, we have feelings as well. And thank you for acknowledging them and remaining in contact over the years. Because as one of the, the paramedic guy, was it Jason? And what he said, and what he says is, you know, he feels so good about this. You're right, they really feel good, especially when the community can react with them. So, thank you so much for what you do to our first responders. And I feel that the news, if it's not bad news, it's not heard. But this needs to be heard. It needs to be posted on our social media. I mean, come on, 18 years? And if Captain Hunsey and Jason was not around, that's institutional knowledge that we would have never known. So, you never know what may happen in life from pulling that cat down off the tree 20 years ago, or what that may come out. It may be, but you never know. So, it works in mysterious ways. Thank you so much. And I would like to see the, some of the pictures that was taken posted in our next newsletter for Daily City, and also posted on our website as well, to recognize the collaboration between community, fire, and first responders. And we would not know this if it wasn't for you coming forward. Thank you for that.
Okay. Dr., Dr. Das Magwell?
What an amazing story, right? As a young father, it's like, I, I was there for my, my daughter's first, you know, awakening moments, and so was my son. And those are the kind of things that, well, you'll remember your whole lifetime. And to have that type of story is simply amazing. And I'm appreciative of the fire coming up with this scholarship. And Natalie, you know, I teach at Skyline College, so look me up.
Take his class.
You take my class to teach history. It's not boring, I promise. But I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. This is like a wonderful story and hope, you know, I'm looking forward to building with you as well.
Excellent. Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for sharing such a wonderful story and really to see community. That's what community is all about. And it's the essence of, and, and it's what you guys do on a daily basis. And that relationship that you built with the community just shows how special it is that, you know, you've connected over the course of how many years. And now, she's going to go into physical therapy. I mean, that's pretty amazing how you guys stayed connected. And thank you. I mean, there's not, never enough thanks to each and every one of you that risk your lives for us. So, thank you so much for that. And thank you for also, not only that, you guys are there in the community, at the events, and understanding it's so important to also give back to the youth. So, I just want to say thank you. For me, I'm like, yeah, Vice Mayor, I think this needs to be, I'm like, where's that KTVU, you know? It's like, that's the type, I mean, really, these are, this is a special story over, over a decade, like 18 years or so. So, thank you again.
Ms. Manalo, uh, Ms. Giovanni, go ahead.
There aren't enough words to say that our firefighters are out every day and what they see, they don't even talk about. And to take a turn of this and, and see this beautiful young woman who's going to be, who is a part of our community, and to see you blossom there with your family and radiate, and these are, these are your brothers and sisters. So, it's, and it's a great thing to have an extended family like that and with, full of love and support. And for them, you can tell they're beaming with pride as a family. And I appreciate everything you do on a daily basis. I know, I hear, because I hear the beep as it goes by where I'm at, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, no sleep, rosy. But you, you never complain, you're always there. And I have to agree with Councilwoman Manalo, there has to be a way we get this out to ABC Local, NBC, because you see other firefighters, and you guys are so humble, and I'm sure the family would agree, and if we'd be ever so graceful to, to have them. Because I don't think people really see that. Because the nature of the job of our fire and our police is they don't talk about themselves. And as our SFPD retired officer down here knows, it's very humbling. And to have something like this in their life is like a moment they, they will cherish with Jason and Hunsey and the rest of you. So, continue on, we wish you the best. And you never know where you're going to end up, so never say never. You could end up here as well. And you also have, I speak for myself, but I'm sure these are, you have us as well. So, you have our ongoing support and the scholarship thing to continue with. And if any way we can help, we definitely will. Thank you for being in our community, and you are our community. And we're blessed and honored to have each and every one of you. Thank you to our firefighters, air medics.
So, let me conclude by saying that I think we really live, live in a special place here in Daily City. For you guys to do something like this...
Yes.
I mean, it just, it shows a level of commitment beyond just your jobs. It's about humanity, about the goodness and kindness of your heart, and, and how you really care about our, our people. And it, it affirms and reinforces my belief that we need to keep you whole, that we need our engine companies back, and that you are deserving of the support of your council and your government and your people. This is the kind of stuff that nobody asked you to do. You did it because it was the right thing to do. It's a connection that you obviously make with people in the community, and it's not going to be forgotten. And in fact, it's just more and more reinforces how valuable you are to us. And it just, it makes me proud and grateful that we have you as our firefighters here in Daily City. So, thank you very much. Great job, guys. Is there anything else you want to say in conclusion?
Or any of them?
Come on, Nick.
Yeah, I just want to end with, you know, we all, we appreciate being able to come to the council chambers, because like we've, we've talked about before on different platforms, we don't always bring forward what we do within the community. And so, it is nice to have that, that circle kind of complete and feel like we can bring everybody in to some of the things that we do in our community when we're off duty. So, we're thankful that we could, we could bring that here and thankful that we could remain in touch with a family like that.
Thank you, thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move on to our second presentation, which is the SFO Airport Development Plan. Doug Yackel, who's the spokesman? Good evening, Doug. Come on up.
That is a tough act to follow.
Try.
Good story, though. I've got a couple of slides to go through with you. Hopefully, you've got access to that on screen. Appreciate Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'm here to talk to you this evening about our airport development plan. I can give it a minute if we're...
Yeah, do you want to?
Please.
Thanks, guys. Never mind.
Wow, that's beautiful.
Yes. Go ahead.
Aw.
I just wanted to mention that bringing back the Engine 95, I think, is very important.
Absolutely.
And if they could work on that...
You don't even have to ask, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Baby Ethan. Aw. All right, big screen.
Okay, thanks for waiting. I think we are all set. So, I'm Doug Yackel, I'm the airport spokesman for SFO, and here to brief you on the airport's airport development plan. This is essentially a long-term planning study that will guide potential future construction activity at our airport. Just for a little bit of background, SFO is the busiest airport in the Bay Area. We're about 2/3 of all the commercial airline traffic that happens in the Bay Area. Oakland and San Jose split the remaining 1/3 of activity. We're the 7th busiest in the US, 23rd busiest in the world, and last year, we accommodated almost 58 million passengers going through our airport. That level of activity also drives a good bit of economic impact. We have about 43,000 people that work right at our airport and about 8.4 billion in business revenue coming out of the airport itself. We also estimate that about 4,700 Daily City residents actually work at SFO. And those residents earn an income of over $315 million. So, there's quite a bit of economic impact right to Daily City as well, as a result of the activity at the airport. Our airport, as you know, is, is made up of four parallel runways. And these runways will eventually constrain the level of activity that our airport can serve. And we forecast that the maximum number of passengers our airport could serve would be about 71 million annual passengers. So, really, the airport development plan is designed to answer the question, how do we get from where we're at today, 58 million passengers, up to that maximum of 71 million passengers? So, the ADP, or Airport Development Plan, is a long-range planning study. It really guides the future development of our airport, and it essentially updates and replaces the SFO Master Plan, which came about in the late 80s and early 90s, and is really responsible for a lot of the projects that you see at SFO. Just for a quick review, some of the ongoing master plan projects that you see if you drive by Highway 101 past the airport, the first of which is the construction of a new on-airport hotel. This is the Grand Hyatt at SFO. This will open this July 12th, 350-room, four-star luxury hotel. Also under development is a completely new Terminal 1 facility. This is going to open in phases, but the first nine-gate section of this concourse opens on July 23rd of this year. And then, another project that just opened earlier this month is an additional long-term parking garage just north of the airport at the interchange of 380. So, again, an example of some of the ongoing projects that were still created under that previous master plan project. So, what's in the airport development plan? This really forms our basis for the environmental review process. Our plan is to seek environmental approval for a host of potential projects. And then, if the need is realized for any of those projects, we can immediately move to the process of funding those and phasing them for actual construction activity. So, this includes possible terminal, roadway, and support facilities, but it does not include any plans for additional runway expansion whatsoever. The goal of the ADP is to continue to modernize our airport, to enhance the passenger experience, and really to ensure that our facilities, our terminals, our parking, our roadways, match that existing runway capacity. So, in other words, that our facilities keep up with the growth from 58 million passengers to 71 million passengers, which is the maximum we think we can serve. What the ADP won't do, it won't change any runway configurations, it won't change any flight paths, it won't change how aircraft take off and land at SFO, it won't expand the airport's property footprint, and it won't, as I mentioned, increase our runway capacity. There's a host of recommended projects, different colors code to different things, light green are parking, medium green are support facilities. But it's really the areas in blue that I'd like to highlight, because those are passenger facilities that we might possibly consider under this airport development plan. And I'd just like to highlight a few of those possible projects in this program. The first of which is the reconfiguration of our existing international terminal. As you know, we've got a large main hall made up of ticket counters. We've got two concourses on either side with a security checkpoint on each side. Essentially, what we'd like to do is create one centralized security checkpoint in the middle of that main hall. We would essentially take that facility and make the backside of it post-security, such that passengers could go from one concourse to the other without having to exit and go through security again. This gives airlines more flexibility, it means that they could operate on either side. Passengers connecting from one flight to another won't have to go through the process of going through security again. So, this is one of the projects that we might potentially do. Another project would be the creation of an additional concourse, or boarding area, as we call it. All of our boarding areas are lettered currently A through G. This would create a boarding area H that would extend out from the BART station. What's currently in this space are an office building and a cargo facility that we'd have to relocate to another part of the airport in order to accommodate these additional gates... This would create a boarding area H that would extend out from the BART station. What's currently in this space are an office building and a cargo facility that we'd have to relocate to another part of the airport in order to accommodate these additional gates that this project would bring. Another project that we would look to create is, in the middle of our airport, we've got a multi-level parking structure. Currently holds about 5,000 parking stalls. It's about 40 years old. We would look to remove that and install a new central hub parking garage and really increase our capacity. This project would add about 6,000 more spaces to the garage for a total of about 11,000 parking spaces, and we could also use this as a multi-level concept where certain forms of ground transportation could also operate in this facility. On our roadways, one of the biggest changes we've seen over the last couple of years is the rise of Uber and Lyft, and that accounts for a big portion of our current roadway traffic. We've already started a process with Uber and Lyft to shift certain types of their products, certain categories into our current garage. We would again look to use this new facility as a similar type of process with other forms of ground transportation, really make this the place where people get picked up and drop off to help keep our roadway flows moving well around the terminals. In terms of the timeline for this airport development plan, really where we're at right now is in the notice of preparation and doing public scoping meetings. Our hope is that by the end of 2019, we're in a position to issue the notice of public hearing and make that draft environmental impact report available that triggers a review process and public hearings, such that by mid-2020, we're in a position to finalize that environmental impact report, certify it, and adopt it. Now, projects would only be triggered when a need arises for the project, and the timeline for that would be approximately 2020 to 2035. And that 2035, by the way, is roughly when we would expect to hit 71 million passengers, assuming a modest rate of traffic growth at the airport. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
What, what impact does your expansion or your, your development, is, is that going to have on the airport noise, or airplane noise, over Daly City?
Great question, and the simplest answer is that this program has no bearing whatsoever on noise in any way. It's not going to make it worse, it's not going to make it better. Whether or not we do any of these projects at all has no bearing on the way that aircraft fly in and out of SFO. Obviously, your involvement in the Noise Roundtable, we've had quite a bit of discussion about what's changed in aircraft noise over the last few years, and it's really not so much the noise that's generated by an individual aircraft because that gets quieter and quieter. Really, what we're seeing since 2015, as a result of the FAA's Next Gen, is a more focused concentration of aircraft over certain communities. What was once an eight-lane freeway of traffic, a wide swath of air traffic over communities, because of the precision of Next Gen, is now a single lane. And those communities that exist under that single lane are seeing a greater level of intensity in terms of air traffic than they ever have before. So working through the Roundtable, working with the FAA, this, by the way, is not just a concern exclusive to the Bay Area. This is happening around the nation where communities are seeing this type of issue and pushing back on the FAA to find a solution. And really, one of the things we're reaching out to elected officials on is to restore that wide swath of traffic that we once had, to essentially redistribute the way that aircraft fly over SFO. But this is a completely separate initiative that's unrelated to this airport development plan.
That's good.
You have any questions? Questions? Go ahead.
How are you, sir?
Good to see you again, Vice Mayor.
Oh, you, you kind of alluded to it again. Well, it gave me great pleasure to serve on the SFO Roundtable, and I have to hand it to you and another gentleman who I met this afternoon, the name escapes me, but I know how very difficult it is. First of all, thank you for your presentation. I know how very difficult it is, especially in the area of airplane noise, but yet, that's not your purview. That's through the FAA, and the FAA's concern is that the passengers are safe, and that's why we fly this way. But to know that there is a concern about airplane noise and jet blast, at least that's on your radar and you do know about it. What I see from your presentation here is we're trying to enhance the customer experience. I mean, I don't know how you guys and gals put up that hotel so quick because I see it, I pass by it, and I said, I'm wondering, what is that? What is that? And I, and it looks like it's going to be very grand, grandiose, and it's great. So visitors to San Francisco that they can come and see what a great city we are, and especially San Francisco and other destination areas such as Daly City. But thank you so much for your presentation, sir. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, Ms. Manella.
So with the projects you've mentioned, some of them are on there. How are you, how are you prioritizing which would be...
My mic not on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How, how are you prioritizing what projects would come down the line?
You know, the one thing we don't know is really what the future holds for us. We work in a business that's very cyclical. My background is with airlines, and typically airlines would have five good years and five lean years. We're on a continuous run that started in 2011, so we're actually continuing a positive streak that's run much longer than it usually does in our industry. We really don't know where the first need will come from. We're already seeing a shift in modes in terms of how people get to the airport. So originally, when this plan was created, one of the things that we thought we would need very urgently is more and more parking structures. And you can see that the plan definitely allows for that, but one of the things that Uber and Lyft has already affected is the way that people get to the airport. We've seen a shift in public parking. We've seen a shift in rental car activity. And really, what we're facing now is how do we take this new category of activity and find an effective place for it, a place that's good for their customers, a place that helps keep our roadways moving? And really, it might be a solution around that that is the most urgent need before we get to more parking facilities or more aircraft gates.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Manella.
First, I just want to thank you for the presentation. I'm the new, you're a new one. I just met you for the first meeting at the SFO Roundtable with the predecessors, and I know that we'll be discussing the departure later, so it has nothing to do, that's good to know, that you're going to have something like this, and it doesn't have anything to do with our departure issue. And I want to let people know that, that at this SFO Roundtable, when the mayor and vice mayor sat on it, they worked really hard and worked with a lot of their electeds, and it's a hard issue, but the, our airport officials are very responsive and listen to us and try to find solutions. So I thank you, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to approval of the minutes of February 11th. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those minutes are approved. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to pull any of these items on the consent?
Mayor, if you would mind pulling item number four, please.
Okay, anything, anybody else? All right, with the exception of item number four, can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, those, all those items are approved. Let's go back to number four. Implementation of a pilot hiring incentive program for the Daly City Police Department. Who's going to present? All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm Cameron Christensen, Captain of the Field Operations Bureau Division for the Police Department. I'm excited to be here this evening to have the opportunity to present to you a pilot program that we're looking to utilize as a competitive tool for our hiring and recruiting in the Police Department. Before I get into the specifics of what that incentive tool is, I want to talk a little bit about the why. While I'm sure there's a myriad of factors, I've kind of narrowed it down to four factors that we see in our Police Department specifically. Those four factors are, first, the hiring challenges that I think the industry is seeing in general in law enforcement. Two, the known vacancies that we currently have and project in the Police Department this year alone. A decrease in applications year over year. And I think on a lighter note, something that's positive is the success that we've seen in the Police Department surrounding referral applications for employees in the Police Department. So just to touch on those a little bit more, the Police Department, and I think I said to some extent the industry, and I know that the county is seeing this challenge of hiring. A lot of that's on a national level probably considered part of public perception of law enforcement, increased regulation. But there's also the fact that we're in a strong economy to some extent, and typically when we see strong economies, we see a lot of lucrative opportunities in private industry. Locally speaking, we have the regional cost of housing concerns, and we also have competitive salaries with other local agencies that we're competing against on a regular basis. Talked a little bit about the vacancies. So we have five known vacancies currently that we have in the Police Department that we're actively trying to fill. So those are police officer positions that we have that we can fill once we find qualified applicants and we put them through the hiring process and the training process. And just a little background on that, the hiring process takes anywhere from six to three months. So the date of application to interview, the second we decide to move forward with an applicant, the hiring process, which consists of background investigations, polygraphs, all those things, take anywhere from six weeks to three months, depending on how everything kind of unfolds. After that, depending on whether or not they're a lateral employee or a new hire employee. For lateral employees, once they pass our background process and they're given a job, they can start immediately. For lateral employees, that is, for new hire employees, they require that they go to the Police Academy, which is another six months. So for us to fill a vacant position from date of application, for a new hire anyway, to actually the police officer hitting the streets in a training field program, is about nine months to a year, depending on how everything unfolds. So it takes us quite a while to get somebody on the street as a new hire. On top of the five current vacancies we have now, we are projecting five more vacancies in this year alone, and that's known based on projected retirements, people that have already come forward and projected that they're retiring this year alone. So that puts our vacancies known this year up to 10. We also have a potential for additional staffing additions in the future, which will again increase the potential for additional vacancies that we need to fill. Decreased applications year over year. So we saw an increase commensurate with our last contract, which went from, I think, 70-something to about 125 applications in 2017. Last year, we saw a 25% decrease in applications, down to 90 applications. So last year, we saw a 25% decrease in that. Again, on the positive note, internally, we've had a lot of success with the referral program in getting applicants from current employees. Of the last two years, for those officers that are currently on the books, approximately 40% of them came from employee referrals, which is a positive thing because we know that if you're getting referred by an employee, there's somebody that's vetting that individual and takes ownership of that individual. So the incentive program, hiring program, is open to Daly City Police Department employees, both sworn and non-sworn employees. The specifics of the plan, kind of on a, on a grand scale, is the new employee that's being hired has the potential to see an incentive of $10,000 over a two-year period. And it differs a little bit for new employees as opposed to laterals. And the potential referring employee has an opportunity to see $2,500. I can break down those times that those are broken out if you have questions following that. The program itself is, is going to be funded through salary savings. So we talked a little bit about the five current vacancies, the five projected vacancies, and that single vacancy that we have currently sitting, and I can think of an employee specific that was promoted, that vacancy has been there for seven months now, as we've actively tried to hire for that position. So those salary savings have been realized for seven months. The position that we do have potentially filling that vacancy still needs to go to a Police Academy, so you're looking at another six months potentially on top of that. So that vacant position will sit for one year. We project that one position could potentially fill the maximum allocated amount for the incentive program, should we look to hire all 10 through this program. The program is a pilot program. It's looked to expire June 30th of 2020 and/or be reevaluated at that time. Any specific questions?
Any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you very much. Another group of public safety that doesn't go around and complain or anything, and thank you for doing the best, and every day they risk their lives, so I just really want to say thank you very much. And so people know publicly that these are the situations, and they're trying to make do with what they have. This does not include, if I'm correct, the positions that were frozen prior.
Correct. It does not include those.
Okay. So in total, it's a lot more that they're working with less. So, so that people know that when they call 911, that these guys are really stretched thin, but they're there to protect us and they never complain. So for that, I thank you very much.
I had a question about the, so when you're recruiting to hire, what, and I'm just trying to visualize asking people to apply and refer them. What's the age group you're looking to hire? Is there a specific age range?
There isn't. Thank you.
Well, as per the state of California, you must be a minimum age of 21 years of age to carry a weapon.
So 21, and there's no ceiling?
Correct. There is no ceiling. There is, you do have to be 21 to carry a firearm.
Right.
You can go to the academy prior to. So there are opportunities there for younger adults that are looking to get into law enforcement if they graduate through the program by the time they're 21.
Okay. And then when they, if they're hired and they're going to the academy, who pays for the academy?
So if they're hired by the Police Department and the city prior to going to the academy, the Police Department does pay their salary, and that comes from the temporary hourly budget, not the salary and benefit budget.
And is there a, an incentive or a push to get higher local Daly City people who live in the area?
Absolutely, and I think we've actually been pretty successful with that. A lot of the relationships that we do have with the community, family members, a lot of our police officers, our local Daly City residents, some of our more senior officers. So we've seen family associated to that. We've seen cousins, relatives, and other Daly City members as well.
Great, great. Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Dr. Rod.
Oh, go ahead.
Vice Mayor. What are other cities in the county doing in terms of enticing recruitment to their cities? Is it based on because they could pay more, or are there other programs that are sustainable for them? I'm just kind of curious about what other cities in the county or other cities in the Bay Area are doing.
So there are similar cities that have similar programs. We did reach out to numerous law enforcement agencies that have similar programs. Six specifically that we spoke with did see an increase in applications as a result of their incentive program. Those incentive programs ranged anywhere from $7,500 over a two-year period up to $30,000, most of which were in the 15 to 10 to $10,000 range was kind of the ongoing incentive rate.
Got you.
So that's what a lot of local agencies are doing. And, you know, I think most agencies in the county, I know specifically, are also really trying to utilize the social media platform to reach. Again, I think some of the demographic that we're looking for through social media avenues. But it really comes down to kind of salary benefits and locality as well.
Thank you, Captain.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
You ready?
Sir?
Okay.
I'm always ready.
Would this be retroactive for those already in the academy, or does it take effect once this council approves?
So the proposed pilot program is not retroactive. It would become effective upon approval from council and city.
Is the amount that the employees obtain for referring, is that pensionable?
So we did reach out and ask those questions. We did get the information as to the incoming employee. We did not get clarification, if I understand correctly, to the referring employee at this point.
Okay.
But we do have that question out.
I, what I, I like what I heard in the sense, I just thought it was just within the Police Department and staff, but it sounds like to me it's anyone who works for the city of Daly City, is that true? Who can make a referral or, because I know other agencies, just the Police Department?
Yeah.
What, what is it here?
So for us, the proposed program is only internally within the Daly City Police Department.
Got you. All right. And so you, Captain Christensen, how many can you get? Say, say for instance, you got all eight out of 10. Is there any...
I've crunched some of the numbers.
Is there any minimum, or say, okay, well, two each, you can't get over four? Or how, how's that work?
Yeah, we, I can't say that we've necessarily looked into the potential for that, but...
Okay.
We, we have had 90 applications last year, like we discussed, and we had 10 hires last year. So the reality of getting through that process with the number of applications and the process that they go through, it's pretty challenging.
All right. I, I want to make a comment to my colleagues here on council in regards to police officer training. You're absolutely correct. It may take a year or more to get someone fully trained, not unless you get a lateral. In police officer training, if Daly City hires, basically, they are saying, we will pay you a salary, but you go down the training and take six...
So, the reality of getting through that process with the number of applications and the process that they go through, it's pretty challenging.
All right. I want to make a comment to my colleagues here on council in regards to police officer training. You're absolutely correct. It may take a year or more to get someone fully trained, not unless you get a lateral. In police officer training, if Daly City hires, basically, they are saying, "We will pay you a salary, but you go down to training and take six months of training, and that money is paid by post because we are through the post agency for the training." All post officers obtain that training. The other side of the coin is if somebody wants to become a police officer and has not been hired by Daly City, and Daly City needs police officers, what they can do is they can put themselves through the academy, South Bay Regional Training Center, for instance. And then, on the date of graduation, police chiefs go down there, "Hey, would you mind coming to over to my agency? Come on over to my agency." And there, you already have the point where you see that this person really wanted a job. Your incentive program, from what I see here, takes into the fact that they, the officer, would get a first payment when they enter FTO, Field Training Program. And when they enter FTO, they have to pass FTO, so then they'll get half of the payment. But that's not it because then after FTO, they're on probation. And then, they can get the second payment once they complete probation. So, I think this is a very, very, very good safeguard for us. Now, the only question and the last question, and I'm going to end it on this, is, all right, so, sir, I've just hired you for Daly City Police. I've just given you your money. You finish FTO, you finish probation, and before I give you this money, I need you to sign this agreement that you won't leave us for at least five years. Have we thought about that?
Of course.
I don't know. Was that in there that they'll sign the agreement that, you know, thank you? Because truthfully speaking, some folks would get their post certificate and say, "You know what? The grass is greener on the other side. I'm going to take this post certificate because it's good throughout the whole state. And I'm going to go over, say, to San Francisco, they'll hire me."
So, we did consider that.
Oh, okay.
And the city attorney might have an opinion on it. I don't know if, in looking at the contracts, there's a lot that binds a contract similar to that, especially when it talks about the incentive aspects. What I will say is internally, we really do not have a retention concern.
Okay.
Most... So, for us, it's really about getting the police officers in the door. Most of the police officers that work here are extremely happy to work here.
Gotcha.
Those that have left for personal concerns or issues associated with family or commute, quite frankly, many of them have come back once they realize what opportunities they have and the culture that we have in this organization. So, I think that kind of trumps the contract aspect of things.
You know, Captain Christensen, you answered my question because you are absolutely correct. From what I've seen, our Daly City police officers love to be here. And thank you for validating and reiterating that to me because we all tend to forget those things. But thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for edificating us with the program and how it's going to work. I think it's so important to ensure that we get qualified recruitments, and it's a need. You guys are working on barely, and it's such great to see you also in the community. I just wanted to say that. Thank you for, you know, I saw you at the ceremony walkabout, and it's also our Daly City Police Department under the leadership of... Say hello, Chief Hensley. Say hello. He's in the corner all the time. Say hello, Mr. Chief Hensley. Under his leadership around ensuring that the DCPD are in the community as well. So, thank you for all you do, and I see you guys out there in community events. So, it's deeply appreciated for also keeping our communities safe.
Yes. And we were one of the safest communities, right?
All right. Any other questions, comments? Great presentation. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, that resolution is approved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Let's go on to communications, item number seven, which is use permit to the signed program amendment for the 2001 Junipero Serra Boulevard DC Station Office Building. Mr. Ron Luckhax. Evening.
Good evening. Honorable mayor, members of the city council. This is a request by the owners of the DC Station Office Building to amend the sign program applicable to the building to allow mid-building signs and formalize the design of signs that appear at the top of the building. You all know where the subject site is. It's 2001 Junipero Serra. Some of the adjacent land uses. The proposal is to amend the existing sign program for the office building, again, formalizing sizing and design criteria for parapet signs, those are the signs at the top of the building, and introducing the ability for signs that are mid-height on the building at the existing office building walls. This is a photo of the existing building in the daytime and another photo at night. And over time, the council committees have approved buildings at the top of the... Or I'm sorry, signs at the top of the building. These are halo illuminated signs, and these have been approved sort of on a one-by-one basis. So, this sign program would formalize the allowance of such signs and then allow signs at the midpoint of the building as well. Reviews the existing signs. In addition to signs at the top of the building, there are these sort of blade signs that appear or that exist, and the sign program would also formally allow those as well as smaller signs at the bottom floor, the first floor of the building. And the sign program would formalize the allowance of those as well, as well as a replacement of this monument sign. So, this monument sign would be replaced with a new design we'll show you. Those are existing signs again. So, these signs at the very top would be allowed. So, it wouldn't... A design review committee wouldn't need to be convened to approve each one of these. The sign program would be amended to allow them at a certain size. One of the things we've talked about with the applicant is that none of the signs would face eastward toward the neighborhood, and they would all be halo illuminated at the These are the proposed sizes of those signs on the wall. At the top, they'd be 40 feet wide and six feet tall, which seems like a big sign, but from a distance. Again, not that big visually. The street-level signs had shown you a previous existing sign, and this would have formalized the allowance of signs on a prefabricated material similar to the signs that exist today. These are the blade signs that would be allowed. And this is the monument sign that would be... That would replace the existing monument sign that's at the site today. This introduces the ability for the building owner to place tenants on the monument sign. And it does still keep within the maximum allowed monument sign height. This shows an overhead view of where signs would be allowed. And again, they would be allowed on all of the elevations of the building, except none on the east elevation facing the neighborhood adjacent to the east. We've placed some conditions of approval. We want mid-building signs limited to a single floor so that we don't see them on a whole bunch of different floors. Signs above the first floor, other than the blade signs, would need to be halo illuminated. This shows what halo illuminated sign is, just an example. Basically, light shines from the back. None of the light shines from... Through the face of the sign. So, hanging characters would be allowed pursuant to planning division review of those. Again, no signs facing east. And there's a general condition ensuring that signs are in visual harmony with the surface upon which they're mounted. So, the city council is being asked to consider in this sign program amendment if the proposed sign program is in... Maintains the visual quality of the office building and determine if the program would not negatively impact adjacent uses. The proposal is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Item went to the planning commission, which recommended approval of the sign program. If there's any questions, the council members have, staff's available, as well as the applicant from Arrow Sign Company is available to answer those.
Can I tell my wife that you're putting in a DR store in there?
We just use that as an example. Good catch.
Any questions? Any questions?
Is there a pizza palace?
What's that?
Is that a real pizza palace?
Is there a real pizza restaurant that's going to be in there? I'm just kidding.
No.
No questions. I think it's...
Yeah.
All right. If there are new questions, can I get a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the use permit UPR 12-18-13 791, subject to the findings and conditions as outlined herein.
That sounded like a former planning commissioner.
I learned everything from you, sir.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Brain Ventura?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. That item is passed. Let's go on to number eight, which is the use permit of the conversion of service commercial use to residential studio apartment at 75 Pueblo Street.
This item is a reapproval of a project the city council approved in 2016. The permits expired for the previously approved project and need to be reapproved by the city council in order for the building division to grant a building permit. So, again, this is exactly the same project that was approved in 2016. Nonetheless, we'll go through a quick presentation of it. The project site is located at the northeast corner of Geneva Avenue and Pueblo Street in an existing commercial building, a portion of which would be converted to a studio apartment unit essentially, a 723 square foot studio apartment. There's a single parking garage that is proposed. A use permit's required due to the introduction of residential use on a commercially zoned property. So, the property's own C1. To have residential use there requires the city council to grant a use permit. This is a site photo. And that was on Pueblo, excuse me, and this is a site photo of Geneva Avenue. So, this is the entirety of the building. It's just painted different colors. The city staff indicated that as a requirement of recommending approval of the studio apartment, that some cleanup of this facade would need to occur. It's kind of busy. Some signs that haven't been permitted appear. These are the adjacent land uses on Pueblo Street looking north, largely residential. One of the concepts that we've tried to advance in the design of this application is that the residential studio unit try to be distinguished as part of a residential-looking building to blend into the adjacent neighborhood. This is the proposed site plan. This is Geneva Avenue just to orient you, the three stores that are out front. And this is the location of the proposed studio apartment next to the residential on Pueblo Street. This is... Slide's kind of hard to read, but it just shows the floor plan with the kitchen and the bedroom and the parking space that would be constructed. Staff has added some conditions of approval, automatic garage door opener, some modifications to the pedestrian doors, unpermitted signs along the Geneva Avenue frontage would need to be removed and replaced by professionally designed signs approved by the planning division. Some facade improvements would need to occur along Geneva Avenue, including, you know, varied use of paint color and some general facade improvements to the studio apartment as well. The applicant has requested that the existing mural that appears facing Pueblo Street be allowed to remain. This is something that was actually previously allowed by both the planning commission and the city council in the previous approval. And so, we've gone ahead and recommended that the mural be allowed. It does communicate the... I believe there was a pet store use that was there, sort of effectively does that. And this is the cleanup of the front of the store. Again, signs that have been not been permitted have been removed, replaced by a more consistent sign design along Geneva Avenue. The city council's asked to determine if the studio apartment in the commercial building warrants the issuance of the use permit and determine if land use compatibility would be established through issuance of the use permit. Proposal is exempt from CEQA. The planning commission recommends the city council approve the project. If there's any questions about it, the city staff, as well as the applicant, Sahil Shatara, is here to answer any of those questions.
Any questions? I did have a question on... And not that I'm objecting to the mural, but what is our policy with respect to having murals in Daly City? And, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but I'm... Do we have a protocol or a policy on how that's governed?
That's a good question. It comes up from time to time. Sometimes people who are usually the people that place the mural think that they're artistic. And generally speaking, we treat them if they're part of a commercial message, they're calculable as part of the sign area. So, it's sort of a call we make on a case-by-case basis. If it's something, though, that augments the, you know, a large blank wall, for example, and breaks it up, and something that we don't consider to just be graffiti, something we think actually has artistic quality, we do allow that.
Okay. With no other questions, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Brain Ventura?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Moving on now to public appearances or communications. I have one card, and it says, "It's good news from..."
I just want to say thank you to the council, to the water department regarding the hydrant issue that we brought up last... One meeting ago. It was broken. We had no water on Old Sessi Court.
Wow.
So, if there had been a fire, it would have been a disaster. So, I thank you for your speedy response to everybody that worked on that resolution. 8:15 Tuesday morning, they were at our house.
Right on.
And had to replace the hydrant. So, I don't know how many other hydrants in the city need to be looked into, but it was definitely an issue that I'm glad at least it was resolved for us, and I wanted to thank you all for that.
Thank you for bringing it up. Appreciate it. Okay. I have no other speaker cards, so we're moving on to appointments. Any board or commission committee appointments? Hearing none. Let's go on to reports, number nine, which is council committee reports. Any council committee reports?
Council committee reports is the one that we had today is under this item?
What?
It's the next one? Okay.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Dr. Okay.
So, I attended the CCAG meeting on Valentine's Day. We voted on the cooperative agreement between Caltrans, San Mateo County Transportation, and CCAG for the construction phase of a US 101 expressway. We also elected... And we elected appointment to the legislative committee, Elizabeth Lewis from Atherton. And we also saw a presentation about the San Mateo County Energy and Water Strategy, which was a proposed flood and sea level resiliency agency, allow San Mateo County and its cities to coordinate across jurisdictional lines, avoid duplication of efforts, and build expertise, and create a unified voice that would better position the county and its cities to obtain state and federal funds for addressing flooding, sea level rise, coastal erosion, and stormwater infrastructure improvements. And if you want more information on that, you can visit the website, resilientssanmateo.org. And then, we also reelected the chair and vice chair, Mary Ann Moles Durwin, who's a chair from Portola Valley, and also the vice chair, Marie Chiang Mai, vice chair from Aswell.
Good. Good report. Any other council committee reports?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 13th, February 13th, attended the mosquito vector control district meeting, to which I am representative for Daly City. And I'm proud to say that through the budget and over the year, we have an excess of close to $900,000. So, we... So we are definitely gonna look for ways to utilize those extras for, for equipment and to better our equipment and et cetera. Then on the 22nd was Council of Cities. And that particular meeting dealt with something that's very, very relevant, and it affects all the cities in San Mateo, and that is on unfunded pension liabilities. And that was a very good meeting, and I picked up some good information there with different options to consider if we had to go through and look at our budget and decide how we're gonna work with that. And thanks to you, Mayor Brainaventura, today was the first meeting of CAFE. And that is the Center for Age-Friendly Excellence. And basically, I thought that Daly City was doing very good, especially in dealing with our seniors and, but there are some issues that seniors have that we are going to look at to include transportation, keeping themselves near where they live now, making the place a better place. But Daly City has gone over and above. I made sure, and I talked about the meal and conjugate program, to which seniors are fed every day. We're gonna discuss issues on transportation. And after these focus groups get together, by the way, I'm with other, it's about seven of us, and they're, each person brings something to the table, and I'm so proud to be a part. It is you, Mayor, who is going to sign the application for Daly City to become part of the WHO. So basically, there's no money in it for us, but basically, it sends a message that Daly City is a senior-friendly city. So today was the first meeting, and I'll keep you posted. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Giovanni, go ahead.
Yeah, I attended the commute.org for the Silicon Valley leadership. And at that meeting, we had a presentation on our safe routes to school, and they're getting elected leaders involved with our schools as well. So on February 27th, I'll be attending a meeting at the County Board of Education, along with the school districts and the heads of our San Mateo County on this particular issue. We have three schools that have been identified in our city that have pedestrian issues. It's Westlake, Woodrow, and Bayshore. And they have received grant money, and many of the issues have been already addressed, but some have not yet. And there'll be presentations, and I'll have more. They have an event that are coming up with a film about a program in Japan, actually, that is working for them, that they might adopt here in Daly City, that will make it safer for our children. And we have a lot of mothers that don't have transportation in certain areas and don't even have a bus to even bring their children to school. They walk. So that's a big issue hereover, especially the Woodrow area, and for safety. And also, I, along with our vice mayor, who is the chair of our City of Councils, and that I attended that meeting as well, and he said, yes, it was a very important issue on our CalPERS unfunded liabilities. And I'm happy to say that our city manager today, I didn't have a chance to speak with the other council because of the meeting, we are part of the 115 trust that was implemented, and details will be following. And thank to the city manager for giving me that information, and details will follow, I'm sure, at some point, why that's a good thing. So I heard on my left and my right that South San Francisco was affirmed that night, that they were part of this issue that faces us. So I wasn't assured of that until I spoke with our city manager today. So it looks like that we are doing things in a positive manner and are taking care of our CalPERS. Looking forward to that. So that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Manalo?
No.
Okay. All right. Let's go to city council reports. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council reports. I attended with many of the council members here Black History Month, and so that was a wonderful event at the Dolger Cafe. And it was filled with music, a lot of history, and learning about a lot of facts that were shared with us. Also, on February 20th, the Walkabout Program, that happened 19 years ago. It's a program with both ceremony, also the Daly City Recreation. And it was filled with seniors. They open up ceremony earlier so you can walk around. They also, it's not only walking, they also do dancing. So it's really, they're very active, and that's where I saw Captain Christensen. And also, councilwoman Pamela DeGiovanni was there. But it was great to see that. And also, on February 19th, with Dr. Das Magbal, we went to the 50th commemoration of the Third World Liberation Front strike at San Francisco State University. It really ignited the movement to create curriculum that really reflected the communities that were in those areas. So Black Studies, Asian-American Studies, or, you know, Latino Studies, that all stemmed really from that movement. And if many of you don't know, San Francisco State University was actually the lead in that in the nation. And there were original strikers that were present, and so to see them there was wonderful. Also, on February 23rd, the Jefferson Council PTA hosted, you know, Journey for Justice, the Larry Itliang book. And it was really phenomenal to see all of, the whole council there, Mayor Brainaventura, Vice Mayor Sylvester, Dr. Das Magbal, and councilmember DeGiovanni present. And it's really an amazing book that does not only just teach young people, but if you are an adult as well, reading that is, has an amazing history around how integral Filipino, Filipino-Americans were in the labor movement in California. And it was great to see young people also there, involved. And I know Dr. Das Magbal also shared about how to use the curriculum. Jefferson Council PTA was integral in bringing that to Daly City. I had a wonderful opportunity with the mayor to be with him in the Southwest Chinese Lunar New Year Parade. And so that was really nice with other API elected officials, part of a papa. And actually, right behind us, what are the chances of that? We had Supervisor David Kanapa in the float behind us with his lovely wife.
Great. Great report. Okay. Any other reports?
I'll leave to Vice Mayor to report at the Dolger crab feed that we attended?
I'm getting there. I'll just wait for, I just thought I'd...
I'll let Vice Mayor expand on the, I had the honor to be there with the Vice Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember DeGiovanni. Apparently, when Councilmember Manalo brought up the ceremony event in regards to Larry Itliang, I was there as well, as she alluded to. The whole council was there. And basically, I didn't know who this person was. And it was an eye-opening experience because throughout the gamut of the cultures and the various diversities in Daly City, every culture has something to add to this great nation. So thank you for that, the Jefferson PTA for putting that on. But I rushed over to the crab feed. Knowing me, I don't like to miss meals. So when I got there to the crab feed, do not ever, ever promise something to a senior because they don't forget. And I'm, when I got there, the Hawaiian group kept calling my name. And the reason they kept calling my name, because they wanted me to dance in a Hawaiian song. I promised them I would dance a Hawaiian song at the last event, and I kind of snuck out the back door, but they did not forget. And sure enough, they got me up there, and I danced to a song called Tiny Bubbles.
By the way, it's on film by the wife.
But, you know, it's good. And Daly City is just so great. I'm so glad, as the mayor made mention, this is a great place. And, you know, with all the council, and all the folks, and the staff, and the people, and I see one of our commissioners in the back, she's smiling at me because it's good. It's good to be a part of Daly City. So thank you. Thank you, and thank you for everyone as well. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other reports? No? All right. Any staff reports? No? Okay. We're going to the adjournments, and we'd like to adjourn in memory of Jeff Adachi, who was the public defender of San Francisco, known to many of us as really one of the true believers in the community when he's fighting for criminal justice and criminal justice reform. He passed away unexpectedly, I think it was over the weekend, or Friday. Also, Edward Only, who was the father-in-law of Kenneth Holmes, who is one of our workers at Waste Water Resources. And also, Maximo Romani, who's the father-in-law of Shane Seibert, who is also a worker at Water, Waste Water. He's the lead plant and equipment person. With that, if there, yes, go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry I didn't, I just received notification from our building person who keeps the area up to snuff, and he's a little bit in a somber mode. Well, he just informed me, a good friend of his for over 50 years passed away. His name is George David Hannah, H-A-N-A. And he was telling me the story about it one time, when they were friends, he once picked him up and put him in a garbage can. But, you know, it's those memories, and I, and I thought I would request that we adjourned in his memory as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.